You all right, your political leaders?
Good evening, and welcome everyone to the regularly scheduled public meeting of the Lower Bennett Township Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, August 27. The Board of Supervisors did meet an executive session on July 29th and prior to tonight's meeting to discuss matters of personnel and litigation. I'd like to open it up for public comments, citizens' comments, concerns, and questions for items that are not on the public agenda. You can just come forward and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Irene Lewis, and I live at 513 Montgomery Road. I'm back here again today to follow up on my last presentation to the board when I made you aware of the noise that's being emitted from the Wisconsin Middle School, the HVAC chiller unit. And I wanted to let you know how it's impacting me and my neighbors. I have a letter here that we have sent to the superintendent with over 30 signatures from the neighbors on Montgomery Road complaining about the noise and how it's annoying and bothersome. It was sent to the school administration, and we are told that they're working on it. Last time I was here, you asked me the important question, well, does the school board know about this problem? And so after waiting all summer and enduring noise all summer, we were able to get to the scheduled school board meetings, and I along with other neighbors were able to present the problem to the school board. So now, the problem is more clearly articulated to Superintendent Chris Field and our elected officials. But meanwhile, this summer, I've spent many hours emailing and composing letters in order to get this noise to stop. You may be aware that the noise has not gotten better. And I took a video today of the noise from across the field. Pretty far away from the chiller, as you can see, and to listen to it, I was able to pick up with my phone. Needless to say-
I just want to make sure that you're talking to the microphone, people online can't hear you.
So that's what I was able to pick up with my phone. Needless to say, this noise travels across the lacrosse field, across the woods, and all the way down to the bend in Montgomery Road where I live. Actually, we have been told to be patient, but this noise has only gotten worse. Now, I can hear it even more clearly. This is a public nuisance. I can hear it loud and clear, and it is bothering us from 6:00 in the morning until 5:00 PM every weekday. I and my neighbors have been told to be patient, and that a sound blanket is coming, yet we don't have a delivery date yet for this sound blanket. And also, I don't know how a sound blanket is going to be tested when the chiller is not running on a, at full capacity on a hot day. You may know that the HVAC can't really be tested very well in the middle of the winter time, so I don't know how this is going to work, but... This noise has been happening for over four years since the chiller was moved, and although people have been complaining, the school has applied very minimal efforts to fix this problem over the course of four years. I suspect that there's no engineers employed by the school who really understand the scope of this complicated problem. I think they are concerned, but I'm asking you, the Board of Supervisors, to realize that this noise is a public nuisance and that the problem is urgent. Ultimately, it seems that this product and the installation of this chiller were not really very well researched when it was originally ordered and installed, and not very well inspected four years ago, and it has never worked properly since then. Who's to be held accountable for this problem that we're living with? It's super annoying, and I don't even live next door to the school. I'm asking that someone from the township visits a neighbor's house on a hot day to hear how it sounds in the backyard. I'm asking that the appropriate inspectors revisit this problem in order to realize how awful this is because it's urgent. And I'm asking the township to act urgently to enforce the noise ordinance, because in April, a sound study that was commissioned by the school was found, what determined that the noise ordinance was being violated. This was back in April, when the sound study was done. We, the neighbors on Montgomery Road, are asking that you apply pressure and supervise this problem in a way that makes the noise nuisance go away. And, and that's, that's the, that's what I have to say about this problem. Can I answer any questions, or?
You, you saw the sound study, you had a copy, you have a copy of the sound study that was commissioned by the school?
Well, actually, I have a, I do have, I don't have it with me, but I can certainly email it to you because I submitted a write-to-know form, and because I heard that there was a sound study, so I submitted a write-to-know, and that was after last time I was here. This was like in July, I sent this request to find out about the sound study. I was emailed a copy of the sound study. It looks a little incomplete to me, seems like there's supposed to be data that goes with the sound study, and maybe some stuff is not there that was originally attached. Anyway, so apparently, I found out in July that this sound study was done in April, and then the summary was submitted by the, the guy who did the sound study was submitted in, in May. And then I come to find out in July, oh, in fact, it was determined that the noise ordinance was being violated.
So that's what the study concludes?
Yes.
Okay, so can you send us the study?
Yes.
I think you got it.
So I could fill you in on, on where we're at if you, just to have the, the little bit more information. So we have applied pressure to the school district, we did, our building inspector did go out to take a look to see if there are any violations of the property maintenance code, because at this point, that's what would be enforcing, and there aren't as far as, we understand the noise is, it's, it's a very annoying noise, we can very much sympathize with why it is bothering you. So if we were starting from scratch, you've been dealing with this for four years, so I very much understand why you've had it for this. We, we started this summer. Even if, if the school district hadn't commissioned a noise study, that would have been something, if they said to us, that's what we're going to do, we would give them time to do that. They're ahead of the game in, in that sense, and that they've really, they hired a noise expert not to determine if it was loud, but what they could do about it. And the noise expert recommended that they get this certain, you know, sound mitigating blanket that they would put around the chiller. They have ordered that, they're waiting for that to come in. So we do keep checking with the school district of whether it's come in, they said that it hasn't, but that's what we're waiting for. So until that comes in, there really isn't anything else that we can do. And I understand this is meaning you're, you're losing most of the summer, but that's where we're at, so just so you have that, the other piece.
So I guess my question is, the, the, and I don't know if you know the answer, do we have a copy of the study?
Yes.
We do, we have, and so was the study specifically as it relates to this chiller, or was it a noise study related to the school property?
It was for the chiller.
It was just for the chiller? Okay, and so we have that, we haven't yet, the supervisors haven't yet received that, but we can-
No, just because then we're looking at a staff enforcement level.
Okay.
So, but we have, I mean, and there's not really much else we can do right now while the school district is waiting for this noise blanket. It has taken a while, we found that enough from our public works department, some things have a very long lead time right now, so, you know, I don't know what else to do.
And just to be fair, I know that, I know that our code enforcement officer has been out, I know that he has listened, I know that he has been, so, I'm sorry, I know that the code enforcement officer has been out, he has listened, I know that they have surveyed the area. I live very close to you, I walk through those woods and the soccer field and up to the track, I hear it all the time. I don't know what it sounds like at Montgomery, but I know that I walk through the back end of those, that little cul-de-sac that kind of leads out to it, can faintly hear it, can't really hear it until you get up to where the track is really clearly, in my, in my opinion, and maybe my, my hearing is going, I don't know. But I, I know that we have at least taken the steps to actually try and hear what it sounds like, and it is a grating noise, it's, it's kind of irritating. I don't know how loud it is, again, I don't have a device to measure loudness, but that it is an irritating kind of sound.
Building inspector also take a look at it as well, so we had our fire and code official take a look at it, we had our building inspector take a look at it. I know, Eric, you've asked a lot of questions about zoning, this isn't a zoning issue, they didn't get a zoning permit, which is why the zoning officer didn't sign any, th- those kind of permits. So it's, so this, that's just where we're, we're at right now, we are not ignoring the situation, we have continued to follow up with the school, but we're stuck at the moment.
So I guess my next question would only be, and I don't want to, I don't know if you want to go first, Tessie?
Well, I was just going to ask, do we have any assurance that this blanket is going to solve the problem? So what, what is the?
Yeah, Eric is-
You just have to come, you just have to come forward and state your name and your address, Eric.
So my name's Eric Rudolph.
If you could just pick up the microphone, because the people online, I can't always hear you. I can hear you, online they can't.
My name's Eric Rudolph, and I live at 537 Montgomery Road. Okay? I can't really manage all of this at once, so.
I don't even think the microphone's on.
So my neighbors and my family have been living with this noise, I'm really going to echo everything that Irene has just said, okay? I will add some detail to it, because I have read the sound study, and I have, I understand it, okay? And there's issues with it.
Eric is an engineer.
I'll, I'll go through that, so. Can you hear that? Can you hear that okay? And you can, can you kind of differentiate between the birds chirping and, and the background sound? That's the chiller, okay? What's, what's really weird, it's not even weird, what's very sad is that's my back porch, okay? That chiller is running in my yard, okay? That chiller was running in my yard on my brother's 70th birthday, when I have my whole family together on July 5th. Okay? That's, that's not right, okay? This has been going on for four years, and the school has repeatedly said they would fix it, and they were fixing it, and they weren't fixing it. And so we got a sound study, that was great, that was great that they did that. I reviewed the sound study, and just to, you know, give you a little background here, I'm a chemical engineer, I've been working in industry supplying large-scale process equipment that is very similar to this, makes similar noises, I work in a regulated space, you know, where you deliver these, these products, chillers, whatever, okay? And they have to meet certain regulatory requirements, so I'm very comfortable with parsing and managing through those, okay? And helping people understand what these things mean. And I went through the time and effort to go through the sound study. And rightfully, the person who performs the sound study says yes, okay? They are in violation, okay? And the, the person is not an expert in the equipment, period. He's an expert in measuring, okay, the sound, not in recommending the equipment. Johnson Controls is the person who made that equipment, and they supply it with the necessary sound dampening products. It's in the report that the sound dampening products weren't on there necessarily properly, okay? And he offered an incremental improvement of saying, okay, well, let's change that out altogether and put it on a little bit more of the system. Whether you look at Johnson Controls products, makes, makes this device, or you look at a third-party OEM, both of them, neither, both of them claim a reduction of two to five decibels. In the report, it shows that they're over 10 decibels over the ordinance, and we need to sit down and talk about that and really understand that. I think that's very important. And I, that's, that's really the thing, it's really about communicating and understanding what's the problem, what's the root cause, and then how do you go about mitigating it, correcting it, and preventing it from recurring again? That's, that's what we have to do here, and that's what we, I'm asking you to help us with, okay? Is to understand that this is a priority, we don't want to have this happen again, okay? We asked the right-to-know to understand how did this happen? So we got the project, the building permit back from the township, and looking at it, one, I was really very, very surprised that this was called a replacement. The former chiller was inside the boiler room, it was in the school. So no noise came out, you never heard anything from the school. The new chiller is out on a pad, and is everybody familiar with the middle school? The back of the middle school spills out, okay, across fields. In the back of it is a tall wall, on the side of it is a tall wall, on the other side of it, a tall wall. This is an amphitheater, and it's projecting the sound of this chiller throughout our neighborhood. To what degree? It's not two to five decibels. This is probably about a 15 decibel problem, and if I was dealing with a problem like this, I would squash it, because if you don't have time to do it right the first time, when are you going to have time to do it again? This is something that has to be addressed, not incrementally, one step at a time, there are solutions for this, and they can be affected now. But somebody has to know that they have to do that, and that's why we have an ordinance, and that's why we have things that govern these ordinances, that people have to comply. It's not, you know, they have to get a letter, it could help them, it could help them all understand that we have a problem. When you look at the permit, is everybody with me so far? When you look at the permit, the only document really in there of significance is the performance specification for this chiller. Everybody should look at that, and it's a little alarming. The decibel range, whether it's at low speed or full load, is between 95 and 107 decibels. 107 decibels, at 100 decibels, you can lose your hearing in 15 minutes. Okay? That is sitting out there. There's no warning around this, from a matter of public safety, at least let me sleep better at night, okay, that everybody understands this. The second piece is that these are public spaces, you know, people get used to this, this is not ambient noise, this is, this is pollution. You know, our kids are playing down in those fields, so I thi- I think we have to kind of think about that, I think that's a really important thing for us to process. Lastly, it, it's, you know, this ordinance was put in place in 1959, okay? A building permit was put out there with a change from going inside to outside on a unit, it's known in the industry to be a noise ma- noise machine, okay? That's a problem. How did that happen? So those are the things, I, I look forward to connecting with Jamie and Mimi to talk through this and better understand it, okay, so that we can work effectively toward a solution, okay, in the most expedient way. And that's how we left it, when, we, we laid this out, and we, we left it with, with the school board, that the proposed solution is, is staged and protracted. That doesn't fit our situation, okay? And it's inadequate to solve the noise problem, period. It's inadequate. And it's going to be, continue to be a public nuisance, it's going to continue to be an issue associated with an ordinance violation, and it continues to be a potential safety issue, unless we really understand what's going on. So, anyway, we have been, we've been asked to be patient every year for three years now, and now request you help us, okay, engage, okay, this, the school board, the school district, to really take this seriously, and not as a stage, you know, step-by-step process, but something that we deal with completely. So it sounds like it did before, when the chiller was in the, in the building, okay? And that's where it belonged, it wasn't replaced, it was moved, and, you know, there's many other things that need to be addressed. So that's my little piece, yeah.
Do you just, I just have a couple of questions, if you have the answers, we can probably just hash it out right now.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea, and I know that you did a write-to-know, when was the chiller moved, when was this replacement placed out?
It, it was made in, uh, over the, effectively over the July 4th weekend of 2018.
2018 is when that was done. And you began having conversations with the school district, I guess, for the last four years, so I'm guessing around 2020?
Actually, you know, it came back to me that I sprinted up the hill when that thing first went on in 2018. I said, because I, I mean, I, I just was, I thought things were going to blow up over there, okay? And I went over there, and I would ask that there probably was a permit, there should have been a permit pulled for a temporary chiller, because they had plopped a temporary chiller, or that's what I was told by the folks, okay, on the edge of the parking pad, and had run hoses back into the building, okay? They said, hey, everything's going to be fine, we got a new one coming in, I didn't know any of that stuff, I was working, you know, I leave at 5:00 in the morning, I come back late, so.
So conversations with the school district maybe happened in 2018, but definitely by 2020?
Absolutely.
Okay. When did you first bring it up to the township? I know that we just heard about it last mon- well, July, it, was it brought prior years?
No, because we were just working with the school district, okay? And it was brought up, as, as Mimi says, it was brought up, when did I? Yeah, it, it really was brought up in June, okay, it was, is brought up in June, and yeah, it was brought up in June, and the, the main thing there in trying to engage the township was really understanding the interpretation of the ordinance, okay? And that was the first part, and I had to do that myself.
But in the conversations with the school, just, just so we can understand, I think, the processes that you guys have gone through, the, I guess, noise evaluation that that, that actually did, I guess that was something you requested, or was that something that they chose to do on their own?
In 2020, in, in September of 2023, Brian Russell came over to the house, and I really appreciated him making the effort to go over there, and he was the director of Building and Grounds at the district.
Okay.
He talked, he said, one of the follow-ups was, hey, I think I need to get a sound study to understand that, I'll see if I can get that organized. And he, he was able to get that organized in, in April, and that's when it was executed. The problem with, when he did it in April was, it's 56 degrees.
Yeah.
Chillers don't run hard then.
Yeah.
Okay? And so, or HVA systems don't run hard, and so the, the system could not, couldn't operate more than 25 to 50% load, and it didn't, it wasn't an accurate study. So what we have is a conservative study, and by a conservative study, it's violating the, you know, the ordinance. And if you add, you'll add another 10 to 15 decibels, and that's really what the problem is.
So in the study, I'm assuming that they're measuring it utilizing a calibrated device to determine what the decimals are?
Yes, they are.
It was only done, you said, in April, so it's not been done in-
Actually, they just repeated it this past week, okay? Because they, they contacted us and said, hey, we want to try to do a better, we did a better study now, they called us afterwards. The challenge there is that when you do these sound studies, you have to be careful of where you sit, okay? And where they're measuring is in the valley, if you know the lower field? Okay, you're, you're going to descend about 30 feet from where the chiller is, okay, down into that valley, and that's where they measured it. My house sits proud of that 20 feet. Sound propagates, okay, in all kinds of straight lines, it doesn't see a valley, his measurement does, okay? And it skews low, and it attributes about three to five decibels. I have been measuring this with an ANSI device, okay, per this, and they, they corroborate all my numbers, okay? And I'm comfortable under, you know, working, you know, across the numbers provided by the, this school district.
Just, just for our own awareness, I'm sure we'll go back and talk further with the staff about next steps, but from the school district's perspective, did they outline to you, outside of the, the noise dampening blanket, what their next steps would be either to monitor and/or if this isn't an acceptable outcome, what they would then do to reevaluate?
The board didn't, what was communicated to us, and I'm happy to forward that on to you, so it's, you know, you have the paperwork, but it basically is, we're going to do this test, we'll release the results when we get it, okay? We'll then sort out a plan, we're not going to do anything, though, until we do a sound study after the blankets are put in. And with all the delays, that's not going to occur until September, October, they're not giving us any dates.
Gotcha.
We're just working from the original dates they gave us, and from a time of, you know, they had a gating item, as far as their quote, basically, that somebody had to come out and measure things, okay? And it was, it was going to be 10 to 12 weeks after receipt of drawings, basically.
Okay.
Okay?
As an engineer, do you think that this blanket is going to work?
No. Unequivocally, it already has a blanket on it, for part of it, you're, you're, basically, they did a test to measure the decibels with a unit that's already insulated, they're going to take the insulation off and put new insulation on, this is really defies logic, okay? I don't, I don't understand it.
Yeah, so, so basically, we need a Plan B, a backup plan.
We need a plan to, to, we need a, a full plan, there, the plan was missing at the design stage, you wouldn't put a chiller in that location. If you had put a chiller in that location, it should be enclosed, that's most likely why the original chiller was put inside the building, okay? Putting it out there, effectively, the appropriate answer is to build a building around it. There are ways to deal with it, they just, like I said, they have to, we can't wait until October to start that process, that has to begin now.
So we, we feel your pain, I, I do particularly, I had an issue on my street that was difficult to deal with, but I'm, I'm going to trust our staff is going to support your efforts to try to address this problem.
I think that, I mean, we're limited by what we can, you know, do with our ordinance, but our staff and, and us as a board, I mean, it's a very serious concern, especially one that I wasn't aware days back to 2018 potentially, and that you have been communicating with the school district, but we were aware that you had been communicating with the school district, didn't know what the next steps were, so we'll continue to work through it and reach out to you to keep you in the loop, all of you as well, is it, are you primarily representing your neighbors communicating?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you have any? Okay. Are there any additional questions from the board? Do you have any additional questions from us?
No, I think the, the pieces, the path forward, okay, the way I hope, the way I've started, and the way I started this with Mimi was to work with it collaboratively with the district. Like I said, I have, I have a lot of experience, it's not my job to solve the problem, and people have to learn what these things are, and I'm happy, happy to help them in that process, but people have to be willing to sit down and talk, okay? And, you know, there's, you can write an ordinance, but then you have to interpret it, and, and you have to kind of talk through those options and, and take those experi- you take your experiences and make the best decision, okay? You know, we're all, we're all in this together anyway, all right?
Yeah, thanks for bringing this in and giving us this fuller information that we didn't have before.
Okay, so, thank you for your time, and again, thank you for your service and taking care of our, our township.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you so much for listening to the whole issue, that's very appreciated.
And thank you for coming out. Are there any other public comments on items that are not on the agenda for tonight? Anyone online? No? Okay, moving on to building and zoning, first up, we have a discussion of a proposed zoning ordinance amendment for M3 District to add regulations for our mixed use, I think we have Michael Markman from BET.
Yes.
I think you brought some friends with you?
We did. So if we can start, we'll just do a quick presentation again, because this has been a few months. You want to click it for me? So, okay, next slide. So, I'm the president of BET Investments, my partner is Bruce Toll, who's one of the two Toll brothers, and Peter Cleland here is our vice president of development. Next slide. Other properties we own in the township, real quickly, the, obviously, the Giants Center across from the township building, go to the next one. Next slide. And there's, that's the only one, actually. So, yeah, so the, just really quickly going through some of our other properties, so you kind of get a feel-
So the, just really quickly going through some of our other properties, so you kind of get a feel for what they look like. Next slide, please. This is, uh, 555 Blatts in Horsham, entry point, uh, to the building. Next slide. This is the courtyard with the pool, um, which we do kind of elaborate courtyards in all our properties. Next slide, please. Just another shot of the pool area. Another shot of the pool area. One more. Keep going. Thanks. Yeah. And this is an indoor gathering area, the club room where people get together. Next slide. This is a typical unit. Next slide. Great. And this is, uh, the residence at the promenade, which is over in Drescher. I think the next slide. Now, this is a mixed use project. Um, the property in question is going to have retail separated from the apartments, but this actually has the retail underneath the apartments. Next slide. Um, a lot of indoor outdoor areas, um, courtyard areas. Next slide. This is the pool area in this, in this property. Indoor outdoor areas, once again. Lots of spacious areas for residents to gather. Okay. So now the subject property, um, which is at the intersection of Norristown Road and 309. Currently on the property sits two office buildings, one that's almost wholly occupied by Borcadia, another one that has a few tenants in it, but the property is currently about 40% vacant. So the main entrance is a signalized intersection on Norristown Road. And obviously there's some area in the front. So this kind of orients where it is. The next slide. So one of the things that happened after the last meeting is the golf course, um, had some questions and comments. So this is kind of a redesign of what we initially did. If you look at the apartment building that's in the rear, um, we moved it a little bit further away from the golf course and we actually took the parking and put it in the middle of the building, because they didn't want to look at the parking. So this shows, um, courtyards, two smaller courtyards on the top side of it and a larger courtyard on the bottom side, and then the parking in the middle of the building. So you're not going to see it very much. It shows the office building that's currently occupied by Borcadia. And then retail space that's closer than Norristown Road. And this is just a conceptual plan. Um, an ordinance has to be put in place, um, which is going to, if it is, it'll have conditional use and then we'd have to get site plan approval. So this is just a, uh, an idea of what we would like to do there. So we actually, since the last meeting, put together some renderings and tried to do kind of a springhouse lower Gwinnett look. Uh, this would be the, the retail space, um, on the closer portion. Um, and then behind it is the apartment building. So if you look, we're trying to break it up a lot, so it doesn't look, um, you know, as large as it can otherwise look. So a lot of ins and outs, a lot of different, uh, varying heights of the roof lines, a lot of, um, different types of roof lines as well. So it breaks it up, so it's not going to look, you know, like a huge building. It'll look like a broken up building, um, with kind of really multiple buildings in one. And if you look to the left, uh, you can see the parking garage, which is going to be mostly hidden and that would face the, uh, other office building, which will remain there. Next slide. So this is kind of an idea of what we have for the retail space. We're kind of open to any comments, but once again, trying to get a lot of the, uh, you know, the look for the area, so. And then next slide. This was just something we went over before, which would be the tax revenue impact from a fiscal impact analysis. So the net yearly revenue of the school district, so there would be, you know, there would be a, uh, the total taxes would be a million 359. Um, we did a study of, that accounts for 21 public school children that would potentially live there based on our study. That would cost $487,000. So the net yearly revenue of the school district would be $872,000. Township revenue would be $360,000, less township costs of $96,000. So net yearly revenue of the township of $264,000. And this was through a study we submitted that David Babett and Associates provided. So next slide. And then we've been discussing workforce housing with the township. So it's our intention to allocate 10% of the constructed units as workforce housing, which is something what we would work through. And then the next slide. The one other thing we've been asked for is for a 309 overpass pedestrian connectivity design intent example. So essentially, um, what could happen is more or less putting jersey barriers on the road and then have a path underneath 309 that would get you to the other side. So this would be existing conditions on the top, proposed conditions on the bottom. And, you know, it appears that there's enough space to do this. So we've been challenged with it and this is something that, you know, we definitely, definitely do if, if this is a, this project is approved. And I think that was the last one. Do we have another slide? Okay. So I'd like to hand it over to Julie Yvonne Spreckelson to kind of go through, um, the proposed ordinance that we submitted.
You do have to hold it in order for the people online to hear. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Again, Julie Yvonne Spreckelson from the law firm of Eastburn and Gray here tonight on behalf of BET Investments. And as Michael, um, discussed, what is being proposed is a mixed use type of development. And this type of development doesn't exist really in any zoning district. It's not permitted in any zoning district really within the township. So what we're looking at trying to do in furtherance of this project would be to, um, look, to have a text amendment adopted to the MF3, which is the multifamily residential three district, to allow a mixed use development by conditional use. And what it would require, and I'll just give a, a brief overview as, as we have submitted this text amendment, a draft of it to the township staff and consultants who have started to review it. And we are working with township staff, uh, and consultants to incorporate comments. But basically what is required would be a minimum of three of the following uses for the mixed use development, including a multifamily apartment building with amenities and, which may include a parking garage. And then this would also have it, a workforce housing component to it that Michael mentioned. And that's discussed further on in the ordinance under the density provisions of the ordinance. Um, other uses are office buildings, retail store and personal service shop, restaurant, bank or financial institution, and medical services such as urgent care, dental care, aesthetics, things of that nature, but excluding any type of surgical, um, care of any kind. And along with the submission of a conditional use application, the next provision, the ordinance requires a master plan be submitted so that there's sufficient detail provided, which shows, um, where each of the uses would be located, similar to, you know, a concept plan that Michael has shown, where the uses are located, the parking and such. And then also architectural renderings would be required to be submitted with the conditional use application and the master plan. And then the next provision would relate to regulations and standards. All, all uses require, um, area bulk, you know, uh, density requirements. And so we go through and we list those for the uses, including minimum lot area, minimum lot width, yards, building coverage, impervious coverage, building height, building spacing. And then we get down to the density provision. And, um, the density provision for the multifamily apartment building would be, um, 16, not to exceed 16 units per gross acre with a minimum of 10% of those units to be res- residential units to be leased as workforce housing units. And in this, we include a definition of workforce housing. And a lot of this information that we received came from actually the, um, the Montgomery County Planning Commission. They have a report out. It promotes workforce housing and it was very helpful. Had a lot of information, um, that we were able to utilize in developing this ordinance. So it includes a definition of workforce housing. And it also explains, um, that the requirements for the workforce housing would be in a declaration of covenants that would need to be recorded against the property. And finally, uh, with regard to the workforce housing, there would also be an annual report that would need to be submitted to the township to demonstrate compliance with the workforce housing requirements. We also provide provisions for off-street parking and loading for the various uses, uh, storage of refuse, landscaping. Um, and then we have some additions that were suggested by the township staff and that included, um, an emergency access be provided. So that would be included within the ordinance. Um, and then a, a public water and sewer requirement for the mixed use development. And, um, a couple of other provisions relating to trail connections with, where there's existing trails on abutting properties and, and architecture, variations in architecture, roof lines and such. And then a special conveyancing provision, um, to allow for the creation of and conveyance of a lot within the development if cross-access easements are provided and such. And so that's just a general overview of the ordinance that we are working on with the, with the township staff. And we would love to have feedback, comments. If there's any questions, we're happy to answer those as well.
So I think we want to start with, uh, bringing up John Kennedy from Kennedy Associates, that he can kind of bring forward some of his feedback and concerns and then we'll be happy to go forward and share our concerns and questions.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name's John Kennedy, um, Principal Kennedy and Associates Planners and Landy's Consultants. Uh, and we have started, uh, working on this, this ordinance. I guess let me first say in terms of the, the overall concept and the idea of it, uh, I think firstly, as, as I'm sure you all know, uh, we are in the middle of a tremendous housing shortage, not just in, in this city and state, but in the entire country. So I think that it is, uh, admirable that the township is, uh, wants to tackle the task and provide, uh, greater amount of housing in the township. I think in terms of providing it in a mixed use setting makes a lot of sense at this location. Uh, it, it, it generally, uh, in, in my opinion, mixed use developments, um, typically are a little bit more successful. They offer more to residents than just simply a, a, a place to be able to sleep and park their car. So I think that, uh, a mixed use development does make a lot of sense. In this location, um, I believe it's, it's actually an ideal location from the standpoint that you're, you're right at the confluence of two major roads. Uh, people can get on and off the roads without driving through the entire township. So it is a, a location that really does make a lot of sense. The, um, of course, the, the challenge and the, and, uh, the work is, is all the details. And that's what really has to be tackled right now. Uh, we have just started on, uh, some of that. I did, uh, put together a, a memo which is dated, um, August 23rd, which we can see up here on the, um, screen. And this identifies some of the questions that were, that were posed to me in terms of, um, integrating this in with the existing ordinance. Uh, some of the, some of the standards that are going to be required may not necessarily exist in the ordinance today. And so I think, um, we need to kind of step back and, and take a look and, and see, uh, how we can better include them in the ordinance. Uh, I know, for instance, one of the concerns is, uh, parking structure. Uh, development of this density, uh, on a site like this does require a structured parking. Uh, you're, you're never going to be able to park it with surface parking. Uh, you do have parking standards in the ordinance, but they're, they really are geared more towards standalone parking garages, something that you would find in a corporate campus type setting, uh, or even a municipal garage in that sense. Uh, that is not what my understanding of what is being proposed. Uh, as Mr. Markman just pointed out, the, the building itself will be wrapped around the parking garage. This is, um, first of all, it costs more money to do that, but it looks a heck of a lot better. So what you're really seeing is, uh, out of three, four sides of a parking garage, you're going to have architecture on three sides. And, um, the fact that they have also configured it so that you have the smallest side facing outward, uh, to me is a big plus. But that does mean that we need to put regulations in place that would require a, a wrapped garage or perhaps, uh, it could also be put in the ordinance where, um, if it's a standard garage, there's one set of standards, but if you go and pay to wrap the garage, uh, and put the architecture around it, you get some breaks from those standards. Those are some of the things that we're going to have to explore. But I think either way, there has to be a separate set of standards, uh, for the parking garage. Uh, in terms of parking criteria, uh, uh, meaning the, the ratios, uh, that is something that, uh, we also do need to look at. It, it's in nobody's best interest to put too much parking on the site. Uh, all that really does is it increases impervious coverage, uh, and also increases the need for stormwater management. So, um, so we will be looking at the, uh, current parking standards and parking standards they're proposing. Uh, I think that it is appropriate to have some level of shared parking, uh, also in the ordinance. That's something that many, many municipalities, uh, have. Uh, the issue there is just determining, uh, what uses can share and also what the, what the reduction would be. Uh, and when you look at ordinances on, on shared parking, it, it runs the gamut. I've, I've seen them as, uh, probably as high as about 30% reduction and sometimes it's as low as just a 5% reduction. So, um, as, as I stated in my, my memo, something, uh, more in the range of 10 to 15% would probably be appropriate. Uh, I think in terms of, uh, trail connection, there are some opportunities where we can provide trail connections on this property and they would benefit not just the residents of this property, but the surrounding residents and the township at large. So that absolutely has to be a goal. One of the real challenges is, is going to be 309. And so I, I'm, I'm glad to see that Michael's already thinking out of the box a little bit and maybe we can come up with something, uh, so that we can expand the, the pedestrian network, uh, in the township. Probably the biggest challenge in an ordinance like this is the workforce housing and how it is, uh, placed in the ordinance and also how it's administered, uh, over time. So, uh, we've had a couple of different ideas thrown out. Um, I think that we, we probably need to do a little bit more research and explore that a little bit more carefully. Uh, one of the things that, that I have been, um, kind of interested in maybe following up on is the notion of, uh, having some kind of regular time period where they are, uh, sort of not necessarily inspected, but the, the, um, the books, so to speak, of the development would be inspected to make sure that those units are still workforce housing and they are available. Uh, and that will be a little bit challenging. I'm, I'm, I'm not going to try to, um, sugarcoat that at all. Uh, but at the same time, I believe that you've got, um, I think that it's a cause worth following through on. And my own opinion in terms of zoning is zoning is not meant to be cast in stone forever. Uh, you, you set a goal, you try to implement the goal. If something doesn't work, then you change it. It's really pretty simple. Uh, so I think that we can, we can, um, put together enough information though to, uh, to get something in the ordinance that will have some teeth and would not be a burden to the township, because that is a major, major goal. And, uh, something that would absolutely, um, contribute workforce housing to, uh, the residents of the township and of the general area. So I, I look at it, it's the ordinance, we've had a couple of different versions out there. In my opinion, it's not fully baked. I think we need to, uh, do a little bit more work and, uh, see what we can come up with. And then I would be happy to come back and present that to you. And if you have any questions on any of this, I'm more than happy to answer them.
One question. Uh, are you familiar with the ordinance named Lower Marion that was referenced?
I, I am, yes. Yes.
Looks like it's a third party in the, for, um, managing that. Do you know how, do they have a third party handling that or?
I, I don't, but that's something that I could look into and, and find out. One thing I will point out is Lower Marion is, is a, uh, highly developed township. They have a very large administrative force. And I think whatever method we choose, it has to be tailored to Lower Gwinnett. It has to be something that you can handle comfortably with, uh, with the level of administration that you have. that you have.
There's a balance between putting a third party. It knows, you know, this is new and not old, but the method that seems.
One thing I can tell you, which I do find interesting as a planner, I've been doing this 44 years. And I work both for private developers and also other municipalities. There's a large number of municipalities now all across the Delaware Valley in Montgomery, Bucks, Chester County that are starting to tackle this subject. They realize that it is important, that it's critical, and it's all different types of municipalities. I'm the planner for Lansdale Borough. Lansdale is very interested in trying to implement something like this, too. So they're just starting to look at that. So I think it's timely, and it does make a lot of sense, and this site makes a lot of sense. And that's the other thing that is important. So I think it's a tremendous opportunity.
I have one quick question.
Sure.
Do you know, and I know that the Montgomery County Housing Department, have they considered, and I didn't see it in their letter, doing any of the administration or oversight around the periodic checks or obtaining the report and reviewing? And again, I know that this is happening throughout the state. I think State College might be the only other municipality that has it online that's documented that they've kind of gotten, it's a few others, but some kind of workforce housing on the books. Has A, the county offered or defined if they want to be involved in any of the administration or oversight? And then B, have we thought about asking them?
I'm not aware of any program where they have started this, but I was thinking of your statement B. I do a lot of work with the county. In addition, I'm also on the Montgomery County Transportation Authority, so I regularly go down to Norristown. And I think that that would be something that would be worthwhile, and maybe they would be interested in being at least a part of that, a component of it, maybe kind of a third party that would be involved in that. So I, yes, I absolutely think that it is worth asking the question.
Jamie and I did ask staff from the Montgomery County Planning Commission that question. They had reached out to us, and I think are still going to do a little bit more of a review of some of our existing regulations for suggestions of other districts that might work. But as part of that, that's why we got this review of the ordinance before there was a complete ordinance. Normally, it's, you know, we're going to have to do this again officially if we go through the ordinance adoption process. This happened because of that conversation. And we asked them about, you know, since they are, the county's trying to encourage it, and they know other municipalities, and they essentially said, "Not really. You might want to talk to Lower Marion because we hear they're doing it." And I just, for context, want to tell you that Lower Marion has about eight times as many employees, literally, as Lower Glen. So, but I think, you know, it's probably worth asking again. I think they're probably hearing that from other municipalities, too, and maybe planting the seeds there. It would make a lot of sense instead of, you know, if we have one, maybe there's two or three down the road complexes, it's, you know, it's still hit and miss, whereas maybe there's somebody at the county level that could do that in a little bit more comprehensive way and therefore be more knowledgeable about things.
And enforce it uniformly across municipalities.
Exactly. Be able to give us more feedback, as John was saying, too, of how to improve.
It might be also beneficial to reach out to C cap, which is the County Commissioners' Association. It's all the county commissioners kind of coming together, and we know that it has happened in other counties. So maybe throwing it out to C cap and saying, like, we know this is a need for the state. We know that housing is in great demand, and seeing if they have any thoughts. Also, the Pennsylvania Housing Authority potentially, PHI, like, just seeing if they have any suggestions, since we know that it is an initiative of the state.
No, I agree. I think it makes sense to get information from any source that we possibly can.
Yeah, we don't want to recreate the wheel.
It may be possible, too, to crack the ordinance in a way where we can solve the problem, you know, immediately with what information we have and then plan for the future, but hopefully the county is going to.
Leave us some opportunity.
Yeah, and that is always the case. That's why I say it's, some municipalities, they kind of struggle with zoning, and they try to get it perfect and perfect. And I've been doing this long enough to know you're not really going to get it perfect. You want to get it as best you can. But if you identify an issue, then you change it and you tweak it.
I'm trying to understand, and we can have an ordinance and describe what workforce housing means, but then do we become like the landlords that we have to supervise this? Or do we turn this over to a third party to implement?
Well, that's really what one of the biggest questions is, is how is it actually administered? And I don't think that the township wants to become landlords.
No.
I don't think that that would be appropriate. So the question is, what kind of mechanism can we come up with where the township still is able to get the information that they need when they want it and to kind of check in on things, but they're not the one that is responsible for making sure that all the rules and regulations are maintained and filled?
I wouldn't want our township being in the position where we had to evict people. That just makes me really uncomfortable, so.
I don't blame you. I agree with that. I don't think that the township should play any of that role at all.
Okay. Are there any additional questions from the board?
I said, there's got to be a consultant that does this, right?
Well, there is, and the thing, one of the things you'll see when you start researching this, especially on a national basis, there are some municipalities or entities, maybe such as county entities, that do administer this, but usually their state is organized very differently in terms of land development controls. And so obviously, we have to work within Commonwealth Pennsylvania. So that does make it a little bit challenging.
Sure. Yeah, so we've actually, since we've been challenged with this, we've been reading and looking at it a lot. And what we're proposing is that we would have a requirement, which came from Lower Marion, to provide an annual report. So there's going to be record-keeping costs on art, so we're going to have to actually show an annual report with records showing that we're doing this and submit that to the township. Now, the form of that report can, you know, be in flux or change, or we can get a form from the county, but it's going to be on us, and I'm going to have to have a property manager who's trained at this and able to put a report together for that year on a yearly basis. So there isn't administrative cost to us, but we're willing to absorb that and give it to you in an organized fashion so we prove that we're complying with the ordinance on an annual basis, so.
I appreciate that. I also appreciate you working with us and getting creative to address this problem.
Are there any additional questions or concerns from the board?
I have just one minor question. So the drawing of, this doesn't have to do with the workforce. The drawing of your building in which you're enveloping the parking structure inside of it, that's, to me, a very unique approach. I've not seen that before. So how does that, like the noise of the cars going round and round, how does that affect the residents in those apartments?
It's kind of interesting, and I can actually meet you over at the Promenade at Upper Dublin, because that has a fully encapsulated parking garage as well.
Are you talking to me? You're not talking to me.
Are you talking to me? Anyway, so, you know, the way it's built, it's precast concrete that's very thick, and there's no noise associated with the cars. So in the apartment hallways or the apartments, you actually can't hear the cars. And this design is actually one that they used where, you know, it's kind of in the middle with one side exposed in West Goshen Township, and we kind of took it, we always liked that building, and it's down the street from another property we have. And it really doesn't, the noise is not, it doesn't transfer through the precast concrete walls because they're very thick and they're precast in other areas, and then they put it together like an erector set. So it really, it's not a problem. And then on the other side, you put sound insulation and you put drywall, so it doesn't actually get out of the garage.
Okay, that sounds great. And then are you planning to put some kind of a architectural feature to disguise that it's a parking structure?
Well, the only part, if you want to go back to the render really quickly, is the part facing the office building that will be, and, you know, it's kind of interesting. So we did the Promenade granite run, and we actually put some architectural features on that, and we could do that here, too. So they actually get fabricated along with the precast pieces, and when they come out, it's like, typically, it's a fake brick, but it looks pretty good. But that one little area, if you can see it in the back, we can actually do that. We've done that before, and that'll face the office building, so that's the only thing. But yeah, we could put some architectural fenestration on that, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just one question, and somebody brought this to us, and I didn't have an answer. It was a firefighter, so again, I didn't understand. They wanted to know how, in the event of a fire in the parking garage, how do you, like, is it sprinkled? How do they mitigate, like, any kind of fire?
Yeah, I'll let Pete address that, because this is always a question, and he's, since he's my in-house engineer, he always.
It is sprinkled, yes. In this configuration, it would be required to be sprinkled. In an open garage, that wouldn't necessarily be required to be sprinkled, but because of the semi-contained nature of this, it would be.
Okay. And they're all interconnected and all that kind of stuff.
And just since I'm up here as another layer to the sound insulation thing, on three sides of that garage, we would also have a hallway between the garage and the residential units that would only be on that little wing that was between the two courtyards. Those units would be the only ones that directly connected to the garage.
Thank you. Any additional questions, concerns from the board? Any questions or concerns from the public? If you could just come up and state your name and address. Thank you, John. I don't know if we're going to need to call you back up or not. Hello.
I know everybody up there except for you, Jimmy. We did meet at Mike Rogge's retirement in March. Was that March, Paul?
So for the record, though.
For the record, buddy.
Could you mark? There you go.
331 Arbor Lane, Ambler, Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
So I'm out on my pool deck, just put my suit on as opposed to not, and ready to do my laps, and my phone goes crazy. I have completely stayed out of everything. I'm like George Bush. I was happy to leave, of course, I got thrown out, but that's okay. So I have never received this many texts or requests or comments on any issue, with the exception maybe of the firemen issue, but you don't know about that, or not publicly. But, so I had come, and I knew there was something going on with this property. And I'm sitting here listening to the presentation for BET, and as you know, there's history of everything in this township. And, you know, it's like, where do I start? Right? So Ambler Yards had a proposal when I was up there to put in a smaller development, and we told them no. And we told them no because we don't have any density even close to that anywhere in the township. And when it was proposed, prior proposals, we said no. And we said no to Ambler Yards for the same reason, too much density, and we weren't going to approve it, and didn't. So when you put something like this in here, I don't know what you tell Ambler Yards after this goes in or potentially goes in, but there's going to be other issues. I can guarantee you that. And the size of this is stunning. I knew there was a development going in, and I'm familiar with the Horseshoe Development, BET did that, and the Promenade. I mean, these are massive, massive facilities, and I'm looking at this thing, and this thing is the same thing. And I'm listening to you guys talk, it's like you're talking in it's a done deal, you're going to change the zoning ordinance, and now you're talking about process. Stunning. So when I looked at this, you know, again, I don't know where to start. Let's take a little thing, like the 309 underpass. When we developed SHIP, that underpass was on the table that they would put a walking trail in. So we determined it wasn't going to be very expensive, it wasn't hard to do, and we could connect the rest of the properties. So, I mean, that sounds to me like the bone is that walking path, and that's a nice bone, don't get it wrong. That would connect a path, and that could bring people all the way down here, and people love walking trails. I get it. And, you know, there's a retirement center there that it would be probably helpful if that walking trail was connected as well. And at one point, I think decades ago, it was a requirement for that to happen with that property changed hands. There was an electrical manufacturer in there. I can't remember the name of that group, but anyway. But there's always history that got us to where we're going to be or where apparently we are now. I can't understand why you would ever want to do this. When I drive down past the Promenade to get to Sanz, I used to be able to go with one traffic light and get there attendance. Now I'm lucky if I can do it in 20. One of the problems we had with SHIP was it wasn't fully developed, and we didn't know exactly how many people were going to be there. And they had a requirement at the time, and as you know, it was sold. And then now we have a bigger developer in there, and they were going to put medical facilities in there outpatient, and they could still do that from what I recall, right? So there's going to be a lot more traffic when they're done developing, and they're still developing, no question about it. And we knew that Norristown Road and that intersection had to be developed because there wasn't enough room on the road to put people because they couldn't turn. They couldn't make a left, they couldn't make a right, everything was all backed up. And now what are you going to do? Well, when SHIP gets done, and you add this, we're right back to where it is that we were before. And that's going to be, it's going to be all the way back up to 309 again. What do you do with the people on the Keene Road? When we got the YMCA in there, the requirement was that they would have, I think it was five, maybe at most 10,000 members. When I left the board, the last I checked, they had over 30,000 members. Now, when we approved all of that, we approved it with presumption that traffic wouldn't be terrible. Those poor people on the Keene Road are stuck. They can't get out. And now there's a house right on that corner. There was a house there before, so I'm sure you couldn't, it would have been difficult to say no. The house got bulldozed and was empty even. There's a history with that, too. But now the house is there, so how are they going to turn? Well, I guess maybe it's too bad for them, I don't know. But you keep adding density, you keep adding people, you're going to keep adding cars. Oh my God. And it's 309, really? That ramp right there on 309? I don't think it's set up for this at all, because you're going to take, there's one traffic light that comes out there, which hardly ever trips. It's going to be tripping all the time, and that's how they're going to get on Norristown Road. And then they got to make a right to get on 309 North. Well, 309 North doesn't have, it's two lanes there going west, yeah, west. It's two lanes there. What are they going to do? They're going to start riding on the shoulder. Paul's going to have the police car there to stop them. It's nothing doing now. It's like, can you imagine putting that there, what's going to happen? There's going to have to be major work done at that intersection for the cars, assuming you're going to do it. And if I knew this was going in here, when we developed that third lane on Norristown Road going west, not only would we not have it, I would have told our engineer here, dig some potholes, make it worse so people had to go around, right? So we put development in for improvements for the people who pay taxes and live here. You put this in now, this is going to be a problem. All I'm saying is, I don't know when you're going to build on this to change the zoning, but I would strongly recommend that you don't do it. That's my request. Thank you.
Thank you. Lovely to hear from you, Mr. Gray. Thank you. Lovely to hear from you, Mr. Gray. Any other public comments? You could just come up and state your name and your address.
Good evening. I'm Sean Fletcher from Axe Retirement Life Communities. I'm actually here on another matter, which you're going to hear on the agenda. So I'm actually seeing this for the first time. And we're your immediate neighbor at Gwinnett Estates, I believe. So all I'm asking for is the opportunity to get together so we can have an understanding of what's involved. So I appreciate that.
I have a question. So with respect to Mark's point about, Mark Gray's point about the the walking path under 309, I do remember that that was discussed when Chip was initiating their development. Have you done any tentative reaching out to see if it's possible to put that under the overpass?
So that concept that we've shared with you is a concept that's currently being worked on in another municipality where there's a college on one side of the highway and the town on the other side of the highway. So this is not actually the 309 overpass, though it looks very similar. It's a few lanes short of the width. So TPD indicated on here, who we've engaged with to work on this project with us, is currently discussing this kind of a permitting situation with PennDOT for this exact same scenario. We think it's possible. We think that the width is there to allow for it. So the Jersey barrier that Michael mentioned, currently those are up against the actual bridge abutment on the right side of the picture. So those would be moved out and away to provide for that protected pedestrian lane. PennDOT does allow for this kind of condition. In some instances, you can certainly talk to your consultant to see if I'm legitimate with that comment. But yeah, we believe that this is, is something that can be designed and permitted. And I don't know the history of ship. I, I had heard that they were indicating, bringing a trail to this point. I don't know that I'd heard that they were coming past that point. So I think this is, this is the connection to the trail that they were obligated for.
Understand. I, I just I don't know. It doesn't seem safe to me, but I can be convinced that, that it's a workable idea. Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments from the public? I don't know, Mr. Markman, or if you or your team want to get up and kind of give any additional. I know that this is the second presentation so that this board has heard a lot of this information and we asked a lot of questions. I don't know. It seems like a long time ago, but maybe it was like two or three months ago. But maybe you want to talk about the size of the units. Maybe you want to give some size, meaning the number of individuals that can reside in a unit, the intended increase to, you know, the availability of, of individuals who could live there and increase to the school district and things like that. Because it seems like those are some of the concerns that, you know, we, we heard.
Well, the one slide that shows the number of schoolchildren, that's taken from the David Babbitt study. And it's actually, I think we went through it last time. It's more students than we have in our other properties. Because generally don't have a lot of school kids. We have a rule that no more than, you can't have more than two people per bedroom in any unit. And, you know, we just had, I shouldn't say, we just had someone who had a baby at Promenade. So they would have three people for one of the bedrooms and we told them that we can't renew them. So they'd have to move to a bigger unit. So we enforce that to make sure. As far as the traffic, we have submitted a traffic study. And you got, I mean, the truth is, a lot of these, I could say probably, and I can get the ages, but I would say 60 to 70% of the units at Promenade are occupied by retirees. So what happens is people move out of their homes, you know. It gets to a point where you have a, if you have a big home and a yard or a small home and a yard, it just, it's all, it's expensive to maintain. And when people get into their, you know, seventies and eighties, they want to be near the, where they know to shop. They want to be near their doctors. They want to be in an area that's familiar to them. So a large percentage of these units tend to fill up with retirees from the area and they just, you shut your door. And we even have people that go down to Florida, you know, probably I would say 10 to 15% of the people at Promenade go to Florida. You don't have to worry about anything except pay your utility bill. So that's a group, you know, that loves these type of properties because they're luxurious. And then when you add a shopping component to it and you just walk over to a grocery store and we're committed to having a restaurant with the liquor license here, a sit-down restaurant and have that kind of amenitized area, it means you don't have to get in your car. So you can stay here. And we're hoping to get a grocery store, but we're not, we're not sure at this point. The other thing it does is the young professionals that move in the area. And I think with the workforce housing, that would be, that would be good as well. Where people, young professionals who are, who are moving potentially out from other areas and want to decide what they want to live in Lower Gwinnett will move here. And they'll become accustomed to the area, you know. I mean, truthfully, I live in Abington and I come and shop. I go to the, you know, the restaurants up here because there's a couple of good restaurants. But they move here, they decide they like it, and then they are buying a house here. So it's kind of more or less transitional. So we have a lot of people that move into these, these properties for five or 10 years, the retirees, until they have to move into assisted living. And we have a lot of young professionals. So I think more or less, you know, a lot of times our traffic numbers are understated. And as far as the Promenade, I work in the building next to the Promenade. And I, I don't find, you know, the traffic concerns that were mentioned for myself. I mean, I leave, I come during rush hour every day. Potentially I have to wait five minutes to get over the bridge over the turnpike, but it's never more than that. And I come during rush hour, which is the busiest time of day. Other than that, I mean, you know, these kinds of properties become really, it's, it's an alternative type of property in the township that doesn't exist right now. So it's luxurious living and with the workforce housing, it actually opens up to people that potentially couldn't afford it otherwise. And it allows people to have an alternative, you know, housing type here. And yet, you know, there's, there are more people on a piece of property, but because it's next to 309, that actually is, makes it more appropriate. I mean, I can tell you, I came from my office. I had to show, I had to bring Bruce Toll by the property again last Friday. And honest, I got here from my office, the Promenade, in 10 minutes. I got on 309 and we have another property. We're looking, we're, we just bought in Plymouth Township. And because of 309 and the turnpike, I got there in like 12 minutes. So it's so convenient when you can actually get on a road like 309 right away. You're right on the turnpike. So you can live in Lower Gwinnett Township. If you have to commute somewhere, it's very easy because you're not going to be on the local roads very long. If you're, if you're going in any direction, you know, the 309 allows you to take the turnpike and then kind of traverse the whole area. So it's almost ideal. And if you're going to, you're going to put a denser property next to it, I mean, it's, it's planning one-on-one and Mr. Kennedy can talk about it. Put it next to the, you know, the infrastructure like 309, put it on the edge of the township, which is, this is. And it seems to us that it's appropriate. And honestly, we've been, we've been, you know, working to try to do something in Lower Gwinnett because we think this type of housing is needed for 20 years. And we've been up and down Bethlehem Pike. We've made offers on cold storage and this and that and the other thing. And we've just never been successful. Because honestly, this is a type of housing that just doesn't exist here right now. And I think that the nearest you go is the Promenade in one direction or the Avon Blue Bell, the other direction. Or kind of, but the Avon Blue Bell isn't going to have the workforce, doesn't have the workforce housing component. It'll be much more expensive. So overall, we just, you know, we've, we've been looking forever and we've been working on this property for two years now, trying to see if there's a possibility to do this here. So.
Appreciate all your questions. Any additional question? Oh, any additional questions from the board? Thank you for taking the time out to.
So, so going from here, I guess we'll work with Mr. Kennedy and see if there's, you know, take the ordinance and take his comments and staff.
Mr. Kennedy's staff.
Okay.
And our solicitor.
Okay.
And kind of work through it. Yeah.
All right. So we'll spend some time and see if we can get it to a point where your staff is happy and then answer any more questions at the next meeting, I guess.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
Michael, you can start with John, I think, right now. We've had so many reviews going back and forth and comments going back and forth. Maybe even kind of sort through them first and then pull in the rest of us to.
All right, great. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
For coming out. We're not winning the night. Eight thirty. Want to bring up our friends from Axe. The presentation of land development planter spring house estates at 728 Norristown Road to construct an additional two buildings and parking, add parking and related improvements. And Mr. Michael, Michael Urban? No?
No.
No. Okay.
A little shorter.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Your name's.
Sure thing. My name is Selsolate. I'm an attorney with Hamburg, Rubin, Mullen, Maxwell and Lupin. I'm here this evening on behalf of Axe Retirement Life Communities. It is almost eight thirty, so I'm going to just try and hit the highlights before I turn it over to Mike Urban, who's going to walk you through the main portion of the presentation. Axe proposing a variety of improvements to their spring house estates facility that's going to include an upgraded drop-off area with ADA compliant parking, enhancements to the stormwater basements, an additional 23 parking spaces, an outdoor garden for residents, the relocation of a tot lot, the addition of landscape berms, and certain additions to the nursing facility that Mike's going to go over. Also throughout the property, we're going to be removing some non-native trees and adding some natives. Couple points I just want to hit on in terms of where we are in the process. We were in front of your planning commission back in March. We've been through two rounds of review letters with the township consultants. And I think at this point where, where we need a single partial waiver from section 123046E3, which relates to curb parking strips. We don't have curbing at this facility, tends to present a tripping hazard for the residents. So with that, I'm going to quickly turn it over to Michael, walk you through the presentation.
Mike Urban with Eustace Engineering. Finally me.
It's good to meet you, sir.
Yes. So this first exhibit you see here is the overall site, which Selsol has kind of gone through already, outlining all the different areas throughout the site that we are going to be working on. Next slide, please. Okay. Yeah, thank you. This, this exhibit shows the enlargement of the, the new drop-off area, the existing drop-off area that is there now. There is no overhead portico share. It's kind of steep slopes in there. There's some parking ADA marked spaces that are not compliant. So what we are doing is we are going to rehabilitate this whole entrance or area in here. It's going to provide a safer experience for pedestrians and vehicular circulation. We're going to provide a safer experience for the residents and visitors, too. So the, the new link that you see there will provide a safe path for visitors as they will not have to travel through the hall of the residence. We're going to have a portico share, which will provide an area for to drop off for protection from the elements. Driveway is going to be at a more gentle slope and the pedestrian areas are going to be a, all ADA accessible from, you will be able to now get from the, the nursing facility and all through the parking area and down to the personal care building. There will be also a area that you see between the, the building length and the nursing facility. There is a rehabilitation garden. That'll be a series of steps and ramps for any of the residents that are requiring rehabilitation. The smaller addition you see to the right is the proposed building addition that is for the nurse practitioner. Previously, well, currently there is an existing little plague area there. And we are going to take that and we are going to move that up. You see plan north up at the top there. And one of the main differences from when we met with the planning commission was that the fire marshal was a little bit concerned with the, the turnaround that you see. So what we did was we increased the size of the, the turnaround where you can see the white striping where there's no parking. We widened the area, the driveway a little bit. It's all one way. A fire truck can not navigate underneath the portico share. It's over 14 feet high. And we've created a, just a larger area for a fire truck to be able to make that turn. And that has all been approved by the fire marshal. One of the partial waivers that was mentioned was for the curb and landscaped islands. We have asked for a partial waiver of the curbing, but we are providing landscape and all the different, the islands throughout the parking area. Next slide, please. Okay. And then this is the, a new resident garden area. This is currently what we're calling the wandering garden. Currently there is just a grass area in here. So to the left is patio one, all the way to far left with the salmon color there. And that's attached to an existing cafeteria and dining area. Patio's two and three, which are the other salmon colored areas are attached to new common areas. There's also a connection from the Medicare facility, which is all the way to the far right. The garden is going to be enclosed by a nice ornamental fence and a wall for retaining the slope. You could see in the two sections at the top there how the slopes, the grades work in there. And we're going to be providing various amenities throughout the garden, hydrangea garden, sculptures throughout, elevated planters, display fountain. It's going to be benches and tables. It's just going to create this blank space that's currently there and it's going to be a nice amenity for all the, for the residents to use. Okay. And on this exhibit, due to all the various improvements we have had to submit for NPDES approval with Montgomery County. We are over an acre of disturbance. So currently there is an existing basin there that is just a detention basin. There's concrete channels. Its main purpose is to just channel the water to the outlet structure and, and release it. What we are doing is we are taking that basin, we are turning it into an infiltration basin. It's going to have a flat bottom with wet meadow mix, slides, side slopes are going to be planted with native steep slope mix. It's going to be tree and shrub plantings around the perimeter. Per the township landscape requirements. With the excess fill, that's going to be created from this, since it's going to be a completely flat bottom. That's why we are proposing those berms along in the front of along Norristown Road in the front yard. And any trees that are being removed, though we are certainly replacing per the, you know, township requirements. And last but not least, the other aspect of the prop, of the project is the parking additions, which although the, the, the overall site itself currently exceeds the amount of parking that is required by the, by the ordinance. We are adding even additional 23 spaces in this area and it's simply, we're just locating this because there's a lack of parking by this building, by the Willbrook Court Building. And there's going to be a wall and guide rail along there. There's just deep slopes in there for protection and, and again, additional landscaping. And that's pretty much it.
Are there any questions from the board?
Just, just the one question about, have you guys been in discussions with about the possibility of easement for the Radcliffe residents?
So we're aware that the residents at Radcliffe Lane have expressed some kind of interest in an access easement. No one's reached out to us. We have met with the township about this and I think you saw Mr. Fletcher is interested in being a good neighbor. When BET was up here, he went over there, he offered them his card. We're more than willing to talk to folks, but we don't think it's appropriate to condition this particular land development on providing somebody else with an access easement.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yep.
I have a question.
Sure.
I assume you're interested in the preliminary and the final approval, but the waiver letter didn't. Does require a waiver.
Are you talking for the, with regard to the parking strips or are you talking with regard to the access easement?
Assuming you want a preliminary and final approval, not just a.
We've, that's the stage that we're at, yeah.
So you'll just have to modify the waiver letter.
Any additional questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Comments? Oh, not Mr. Gray. It's your night.
Radcliffe. We've been asking, well, I say, the board was asking four years from Spring House, years to get access to help the folks on Radcliffe because they don't have a signalized road. They can't, they can't get out. So we went to Spring House Estates and they said, we're always willing to talk. That was years ago. Now, one of the issues with Radcliffe too, if you talked to the fire marshal, is access. Right? So getting a, if there, if there's a fire or an emergency procedure in, in Radcliffe, access in getting equipment in and out because there is no signalized intersection is a problem. So I real, I just heard that they didn't want to hold up your approval or their approval for any of this because they're always willing to talk. Well, talk is cheap. It's been going on for ten years. When's it going to stop? They come before us or before you. They, they ask for changes. They, they ask for a sale of the property, change the use. They've asked for all of this stuff. And we, the township, never got a safety concern addressed. Big problem. So they're here again. Alright, they're before you. It's up to you guys what you want to do. But I think it's time that they actually step up to the plate. So, and I don't know how Spring House Estates is organized because Gwinnett Estates is also an Axe facility across the street. But they're part of the same, I'm sure they have different corporate IDs, but they're part of the same management group. So just to want to go back a little bit to this development, we asked them, a long time, Spring House, Gwinnett Estates, if they were interested in that property because there was a big building on there that couldn't be used. And the answer was why? Because Al, the fire marshal, said, you can't occupy that building unless you sprinkle it. And of course, the answer came back, well, how much, the question came back, how much money would that be? And the answer is a lot. So unless they sprinkled that building or otherwise got our fire marshal to give a waiver, there should be nobody in that building. Now, we just heard that they're using that building. It's not sprinkled. It's a problem. Now, maybe Al didn't know it. I don't know. But my point in all of this is Gwinnett Estates is now hemmed in all the way around. And the only place they can grow is the site BET is talking about right here. Right? And I don't know if there'd even be a text amendment required for them to do it, but they might be able to do it. And taking care of senior citizens in Lower Gwinnett is a problem. And we want senior citizens in Lower Gwinnett for many reasons, but putting them in finding a place for them in Lower Gwinnett is a problem because you quickly run out of space because everybody wants to live in Lower Gwinnett. Or at least they did when I was up there and I'm sure it hasn't changed. So we have a similar situation with the Merck property. Now, the Merck property was being sold.
I don't want to stop you, Mr. Gray.
We, we got the developers to agree.
Topic of that.
All I'm saying is it's all Axe. We've done this before and I don't know if any of you folks have, have approached any of them, but we could do it. But, but giving them permission after all of this time, please think about it. Thank you.
So just, just for clarification, just so you're aware, our board packets now are available online before we have the meeting. The memo for this actual consideration includes in there that we have extensively discussed as a board and the B and Z committee specifically around, we would like to secure an easement for the applicant. And so, and the applicant being Radcliffe. So we would like to secure an easement. The problem is that this board likes to actually plan and we don't have plans ready to move towards what that easement would look like. It would be unfair to our community partner and one of our neighbors to ask of them something that we can't even articulate at this point. Prior boards to us did not make those preparations. So what that would look like, what we need and all of the particulars around that, once we know all that information, it would be an appropriate time to come to our neighbor and say, this is what we would like. They are willing to enter into a memorandum of understanding with us in the event that it's probably going to be like ten years from now when none of us are here and maybe none of the Axe individuals are even there, that we're ready and prepared after all the projects that we have lined up to move forward with that unless something were to happen in the, in the interim. So this memorandum of understanding, at least let's all of our parties know that we are interested. This is why we're interested. They understand and we understand. And that little piece of information will continue in perpetuity until we get to the point that we're ready to move forward. So it was a discussion that we had at length. It wasn't something that anyone did forget. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew that.
Okay, but there was a plan for Radcliffe.
We, we don't have the plan. They don't have the plan and we're not ready to move on the plan right now.
Well, that's okay. You can't say that there wasn't because there was. So where is that? You know, I have no idea. But, but that's.
That would be good to know.
Question is a big deal. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, no, it would be good to know where the plan was, but you know, here we are.
Yes, we are.
Okay. Thank you so much. Is there any additional questions or comments? Any additional questions or comments from the public? So I want to put forward a motion to recommend authorizing our township's solicitor to prepare an approval resolution for preliminary and final. Do we need to? Do they need to have amended their waiver before?
No.
Okay. I'd like to make, you trust them? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the, our township's solicitor to prepare an approval resolution. Is there a second? Come on. All those in favor? Motion carries. There we are. Thank you so much. Next up, we have a public here. Thank you guys for coming in. Appreciate it tremendously. Next up, we have a public hearing and I'm going to turn it over to our solicitor.
We have a very patient court reporter here as well. We will go on the record and say that this is a public hearing. We consider a proposed zoning ordinance amendment. It is designated as ordinance number five forty-seven. It's intended to create a new chapter, twelve hundred and five A, entitled Small Wireless Facilities to be added to the zoning ordinance. Proposed amendment conforms to the Pennsylvania Small Wireless Facilities Deployment Act by adding new definitions and provisions governing the installation of small wireless facilities. In the interest of time, I'll just move right to the exhibits. Exhibit T one, it's a memorandum from J. P. Wardman, the Assistant Township Manager, dated August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. Exhibit T two, it's the public notice of hearing. Exhibit T three are the two affidavits of publication from the reporter indicating that the notice of hearing was published July thirty and August twelve, two thousand and twenty-four. Exhibit T four is the proposed ordinance number five forty-seven. Exhibit T five is the Montgomery County Planning Commission Review Letter of August fourteen, two thousand and twenty-four. There were some comments in that letter about adding some definitions to ordinance. Exhibit T six are the minutes of the Township Planning Commission Meeting of August twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-four. Again, supportive of the Montgomery County Planning Commission's suggestions of additional definitions. And that's it in terms of exhibits. At this point, the board intends to discuss the proposed ordinance. Consider whether to authorize the changes to the ordinance. It's recommended by the county and township, a planning commission. You can then take public comment and if appropriate, vote on the ordinance.
Are there any questions from the board?
I would suggest we amend the ordinance to input the county's.
Any additional?
Were also comments made by the county about adding two definitions, co-location of modification. I think we'll leave.
I would like to add those as well. Our planning commission didn't make any recommended definition changes.
They supported the county's letter with regard to co-location of modification.
Yeah.
Mimi did not support the change.
Okay. And so the, the county defined the historic building saying that a small wireless facility shall not be located on the front edge of any building deemed to be historic significance of federal, state or local level. It goes on to describe in those exhibits. But I too would be in support of second and two definitions as well as historic. Any additional comments or questions from the board? Do we open it up to the public? No. Is there any comments, questions from the public? Seeing none.
So we're, we're accepting the county's definition here.
You would be voting to approve the ordinance subject to changes as recommended by the county.
Gotcha. Okay.
And those changes are fairly minor, do not affect the substance of the ordinance, so it would not have to be re-advertised.
Okay.
Sure as good news.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance five forty-seven, Small Wireless Facilities with the additional definitions that we want to specify that were made by the county planning commission. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I can close.
Thank you.
Thank you for being.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. It's good seeing you as well. We apologize. So next up is our general business and Mr. Hirsch is going to do a very brief presentation of Lower Gwinnett's sanitary sewer system.
Very brief.
Alright, sounds good. I had heard I might be tabled, so this is, this is good.
Well, we just like to endure the pain.
We have one. We believe in.
Got an hour prepared here, so. Alright, so Mimi asked me to give a brief overview on the sanitary sewer system in Lower Gwinnett. So up on the projector there, there's a handful of bullet points and we'll run through them pretty quickly here. So Lower Gwinnett Township owns the collection and conveyance system that will collect and transport the sanitary sewer flow and ultimately transport it to Ambler Wastewater Treatment Plant. An average of two point eight million gallons a day flows through the system. Township, the system that I just described receives flow from both Lower Gwinnett properties as well as upper, sorry, as well as Montgomery Township, Upper Dublin, Upper Gwinnett, Whitpain and Ambler Borough. The system comprised of both gravity sewer, which is six to thirty-inch pipes. You got seventy-nine miles of it along with four smanes and then three pump stations. You guys do yearly maintenance on it. The Public Works Department will inspect manholes, grease traps and routinely pressure jet the problem areas. Township has an operations and maintenance contract with Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority. Thank you, Mimi.
Take a second. Take a second. I'm so, we're sorry, okay? We didn't mean to rush you. We didn't mean to rush you.
I'm not sorry. I'm not sorry.
Take a second. We didn't mean to rush you. We apologize.
I'm not apologizing.
You okay?
I'm good.
Alright.
The township has an operations and maintenance contract with Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority to monitor oversight and perform routine maintenance on the pump stations. So a combination of the Public Works Department and Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority perform most of the maintenance that the township does on the system throughout the year. Mimi gave me these numbers, but the township spent about a million dollars last year maintaining the system. In addition to that, the treatment of the wastewater and money that is paid to Ambler Wastewater Treatment Plant, it's also a large expense. And the township paid about one point two million dollars to Ambler last year for treatment of wastewater that was collected by your system. Additionally, as far as maintenance goes, we have yearly infiltration inflow televising, cleaning and repairing contracts, which we have talked about here before. The township will contract with a third party to conduct television inspections of the sewer system and identify areas that need to be repaired. Typical repairs are grouting of leaking joints, grouting of manholes and curated placed pipe liners, which once they identify a section of the pipe that is broken, the company can put a liner in there without having to dig up the, the pipe. Every year, we prepare a chapter ninety-four report that will detail flows within the system, several meters throughout the, the system. And then also we're, we're detailing upgrades, expansions as far, and also anticipated projects with, with a five-year outlook. So potentially a project like BET or a project like some expansion at Ambler Yards or something. We're letting DEP know, we're letting the Ambler Wastewater Treatment Plant know that there are additional flows coming down the pipeline. That report is then submitted to DEP with a copy to the treatment plant. Some planned upgrades in the next few years. We're purchasing a backup pump for the Forest Manor Pump Station. Bucks County Water and Sewer has identified that as a need that will help out with some of the maintenance that they have to do currently. If a pump goes down in that pump station, we have to pump and haul away while the pump is replaced. So this would allow them to switch out a pump and over time sort of pay for itself. Couple of replacements to the open door pump station, which pumps flow up Norristown Road and redesign of the open door pump station, which has been identified by Bucks County Water and Sewer as needing some upgrades. Portions of those projects and actually most of those projects are going to be funded through a DCD small sewer grant, which was awarded to the township in two thousand and twenty-three. I have, I could talk more, but I feel like maybe we just go to questions.
And this is a good natural pause. We can absorb this information and perhaps.
Ruminato.
Ruminate.
Let it marry.
And at our next meeting, come back, circle back around to the rest of it and we'll go with questions. That sound good?
Sounds good to me.
That sound good to you?
Yeah.
Is this just an, an overview, an FYI, or are you getting to the point of asking?
It was just kind of like background.
I wasn't going to ask you for anything. I think that there may be.
Yes.
Think there may be some discussions in the future rega, regarding the system and capital projects.
Little bit of an idea, like where the pump station are. Just see, I have a little better some capacity.
Yeah, so we were starting with some background information and then we were going to move towards understanding the map where everything is and presenting it to us so that as we look towards like maybe next steps in understanding this utility, if we had any additional questions or. if we had any additional questions or investments and things like we needed to think about as capital projects, we had a better understanding of where we were. So given that it's almost 9:00 PM, I think this is a good starting point. And then at our next meeting, we can consider next steps and move the conversation a little bit forward. Does that make sense?
It's fine with me.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hirsch. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from the board? Very, very good. Thank you so much. Next up, we have the consideration of Resolution 2024-26. It was included in our board packet. It's approval of the sale of the Ingersoll property. The resolution outlines what we did with the wherazes and the therefor's related to the sale of that property. The, the individuals wheraz were Philip Reason and Shirley Reason. They were the highest bidder of the auction with the bid of $710,000. Moving forward, that that agreement was entered into July 29th of 2024. We are considering the approval of this resolution related to that final sale. I'd like to make a mo, are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a resolution to approve, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-26, approving the sale of the Ingersoll House.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There we go. Next up is our proposals for sidewalk and trail and trail crossings. Included in our board packet is a memorandum from our project manager, John Farrell. Now, John went into great detail to explain what the recommended action is, the motion, and what we should consider. Has everyone taken time to read this prior to this meeting? Are there any questions or concerns?
No questions, concerns, but thank you for doing that, for tackling this. This has been a sore spot for years, so I think this is a terrific effort. Thank you.
This was included in our board packet, so the public did have an opportunity to see it. Are there any questions or concerns from the public? And thank you, John, for all that hard work. I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal for Gilmore and Associates for $22,500 and Bowman for $13,925 to review our existing sidewalk and trail connection, review the pedestrian crossings, and develop a plan for future sidewalk and trail connections and safety improvements. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Thank you, guys. Next up is the consideration to send out a bid, the traffic signal pole replacement at Bethlehem Pike and Dagger Road. Again, included in our board packet was a memorandum. And this was developed by our, wait a minute, hold on. Wait a minute. I'm sorry. This is prepared by Ellen Lamb and Chad Dixon from Bowman. And it kind of goes through the signal evaluation at Bethlehem Pike and Dagger and their recommendation for the two poles to be replaced. They kind of outline masthead is the string pole. And they believe that the anticipated scope would, would outline a recommended bid award around October 8th of 2024. Wait a minute. Yeah. Current estimated lead time is about eight months from the order once placed with the contractor. It's an aggressively long period of time. Anyone have any questions for our traffic engineer related to the consideration just to authorize a bid for the traffic signal pole replacement?
I have a question. One thing I didn't know, one thing I didn't see and hear, and maybe I missed it, is why do they need to be replaced?
Yeah, it was, it was based on a recent inspection from your signal maintenance contractor who regularly inspects all the signals in the township. They raised the condition of these two poles to our attention. We went out and evaluated them and recommended the staff that they be replaced in the near term.
Right, thank you.
And we did, just for the record, I don't know if everyone can read what's in the memo, but we did budget for this cost in our 2024 budget.
Correct.
Any additional questions or concerns on the board? Questions or concerns on the public? I'd like to make a motion to authorize the advertisement and bid for the traffic signal pole replacement as identified in the memo by our traffic engineer at Bethlehem Pike and Dagger Road. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is the considerations of a request from the EAC for expenses related to landscaping materials for flower beds at the Whistaken High School and a donation to Journey Works for Pollinator Gardens. Again, included in our board packet was a memo from our recreational director, Sandy Fight, outlines requests and the total amount requested again is $750. We allocated monies well in excess of $750 for the EAC related to projects of this nature. Are there, and again, the memo outlines the entirety of the request, the timeframe and the project timeframe. Are there any questions from the board?
There's two costs.
Correct. For Journey, yes, Journey Works for the Pollin, and the Whistaken High School. Flower beds at the Whistaken High School and a donation to Journey Works for Pollinator Gardens. Still totaling $750.
Right, the, the donation will go to the Lower Gwinnett residents.
Absolutely.
No, the total cost is higher than that.
Yeah, it's a thousand.
Oh, total, okay. It went up. I'm sorry. A thousand dollars. There it is.
You got it.
Okay. Any questions?
I think Mike was just making sure the only Lower Gwinnett residents can participate in Pollinator Palooza.
Yep.
Pollinator Palooza.
I love that.
Any additional?
I suspect more than just Lower Gwinnett residents could participate, but they're the only ones that are going to get.
Yeah, the first 10.
Right, okay.
Any additional public? I'd like to make a motion to authorize up to $250 for reimbursement for planting materials for the redesigned flower beds by the nanatorium at the Whistaken High School and a $750 donation to Journey Works to be used for the first 10 Lower Gwinnett residents who sign up for Pollinator Palooza. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is the consideration of waiving our requirements of 61, I'm sorry, 6012 of the Township Code to permit the sale and consumption of alcohol at the Lower Gwinnett Fall Fest on September 21st, 2024. Again, included in our board packet from our township manager. If the section being waived, it is for Fall Fest. This is something that we have done in the past. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Concerns? Like to make a motion to waive the requirements of Part 6, Section 61201 of the Township Code to permit the sale and consumption of alcohol in the Lower Gwinnett Township Fall Fest to be held on September 21st, 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Included in our board packet was the township engineer report as well as our traffic engineer report. I assume that everyone took the time necessary to do their due diligence and read that. We want to thank our township engineer and our traffic engineer for providing us those reports. In addition, Melinda so graciously provided us a finance report. That is also included. And I want to expect that our board to do their due diligence in reviewing. And, and if you have any questions or concerns, now would be the time to bring that up.
I just have one small question about the, the land that is now cleared at the intersection of Norristown and Bethlehem. So is the intent to just seed with grass seed that open space for the time being?
That would, that would be for the traffic engineer, not Melinda.
Oh, I thought you opened it for all three of them.
No. No, we can go back, we can go back to Chad.
All right. Thanks, Melinda.
Their contract with the township required them to restore it to its original condition before the construction project. So yes, they'll just be putting grass seed down to bring the grass back.
Okay.
Property.
It, it looks good and, and at last, the porta potty is gone. So that, that all's good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions for any three of our professionals? Traffic engineer? Engineer? And or Melinda? Seeing none, we have before us our invoice reports. I hope that everyone took, one, took the time and to review all of the invoice listed on the accounts payable for checks dated 8/27/2024. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve of our invoice report. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Included in our board packet was the meeting minutes from our July 23rd, 2024 and our July 29th, 2024 meeting. I'm assuming that everyone took the time to review. Are there any questions, concerns, or edits to those meeting minutes? Seeing none, are there any questions or concerns from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for our July 23rd, 2024 and July 29th, 2024 meeting. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Included in our board packet was our supervisor liaison reports, and I'm assuming that everyone took the time to review those reports. Staff updates. Are there any staff updates? Thank you so much to the staff for all of the hard work. Supervisor comments. Tessie?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that the, the works that our staff have been doing lately are, are really appreciated by the township, including completion of this intersection. I think it was grueling while we were going through it, but now that it's done, it's really nice. And so it adds very positively to the, you know, the township for letting traffic flow through. So I just want to thank all of the staff for all of your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Janine?
Second.
Jimmy? Mike?
Want to talk about this? No, no. Thank you.
I want to thank all of our staff for all the hard work that they continue to do. It's very evident to us, and we've worked the entirety of the summer. We hope that everyone had some opportunity to have some time off and spend some time with their families. We're greatly appreciative of it, and it does nothing but benefit our community and speaks volumes to the hard work that we all aspire to bring to Lower Gwinnett. So we thank you graciously. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned.